Welcome back to the convo couch, ladies and gentlemen. I am Pasta Jardula.
And I'm Fiorella.
And Johnny Sue is still spinning on those ones and twos. And today in the studio, we have a great guest. We have our good friend. He was an activist who worked on the writing of, he was an activist who worked on the writing of SB 562. He also helped found the first student affiliate group of the National Conference of Black Political Scientists and the Gay Straight Alliance. My favorite word, alliance. He's also running for LA City Council. I believe it's District 9. David Cunningham is in the house. How are you doing, David?
Thank you for having me, Pasta.
Ah, no doubt.
Welcome, yeah.
Good to see you as well.
We're gonna talk about a lot of things today. We're gonna talk about, why you're running, who you're running against, what's inspired you. You're gonna kick off our candidate month. You're the first guy in the studio. And we appreciate getting in here. So let's just jump right out of it. You, you're from Watts originally, right?
I'm from South Central Los Angeles and Watts, to be specific.
Yeah.
Um, I grew up in foster care.
I was neglected by the system. And I became homeless at a young age, at 11. And it's the story of so many foster youth and, you know, LGBTQ youth, world, nationwide. And I'm running to change that, you know, I'm running to be a voice for the unheard voices.
Yeah, I mean, didn't you eventually get adopted, I think you thought?
Well, yeah, I was adopted. And when I was adopted, um, that family, I was abused by that family. Yeah, I was abused mentally, physically, emotionally, even sexually in that home. And that's when I became, you know, I would, I would report the abuse. And, you know, no actions prevailed. And, at 11, I became homeless after opening up about my sexuality. So, um, my eighth grade teacher, Julia Tobert, she took me in, um, to her home and she cared for me and nurtured me. And I was able to complete the eighth grade and she enrolled me into Locke High School, where I graduated at 15 with the Apex Program. The Apex Program is an exhilarated learning program where you learn on your own time. And after every class you complete online, you earn your credits. And I was able to finish in my ninth grade.
That's awesome. I knew there was a hero somewhere in this story. What's her name again, the eighth grade teacher?
Her name is Julia Tobert.
Awesome.
She's, you know, we stay in contact, you know, still. She's like a, she's my mother, you know, she was there for me and she's still there for me. And she fought the system to get, or for me to be allowed to go on to Savannah State University because, you know, the system and the county were trying to cover their asses, by trying to, you know, claim that I was making up stories. But she was like, no, this kid was homeless. You know, I took him in and we sat on, on the phone for hours, early mornings, reaching out to social workers and to the, you know, to the county, to get services and resources for this kid. And a judge granted and ruled in our favor and allowed me to go to Savannah State University.
That's awesome.
That's amazing. So, uh, obviously this influences you a certain way into understanding the hardships that people in this very expensive city endure. You are now going to law school. What is, what else like is driving you to run? Because this is a very corrupt city. I mean, we, a lot of people assume that California is very progressive. And then, you know, you, you start understanding the establishment here, the California Democratic Party. And you start seeing just how not progressive they are and how there's a lot of activists here. But we need to get our activists in, in office.
Right.
What, what is driving you? What do you want to accomplish by going into the LA City Council? It seems like a cesspool of corruption.
Right. So I started off, um, in politics. I was asked by a group of ladies, um, or women in, um, or Watts, you know, to run for state assembly. And I wasn't too sure because my goal has always been to be a judge and an attorney and, you know, fight for, you know, criminal justice reform and ending the school to prison pipeline. And, um, I wasn't really sure about getting into politics, you know, I didn't know my impact, with going into politics and running for office. So I launched my campaign. Well, they gave me a week to decide. And I came back to them, um, that week and I still wasn't sure. But the ladies were like, well, we're gonna move on with another person. And I was like, hold up. Let's go back to the drawing board. I would like to run and I would like to serve the people of Assembly District 64. And I ran, um, to take out Mike Gibson, who's, you know, a corrupt individual and, you know, constantly votes in favor of oil companies and, you know, pharmaceutical companies. I like clean air.
That's.
But unfortunately, Los Angeles doesn't have clean air because of pollution that's driven by the oil companies and Carson and in, um, in, in that area, in the 64th, the Assembly District and in Torrance.
It happens to be low income minority areas too, that always get the worst, the brunt of the problem.
So you went through all this craziness with your life and now you're back here, you're back home in Watts. In your district, what is the most pressing issue that you need to tackle within your district of Watts?
Um, homelessness. Homelessness is my number one focus going into the city council. We need not to criminalize homelessness. We need to provide housing for these people. We need to, you know, stop selling out our city to developers. And I will work closely with the district attorney in prosecuting elected officials who sell out our communities. And who, um, who sell out our communities and who misuse taxpayer dollars.
On that point, what is your opinion of DA, uh, Jackie Lacy?
Well, um,
Spoiler alert, you're getting to the part of the show. Yeah, we, that's where we met.
Yeah. So, um, the district attorney, um, the current district attorney, um, she's unfit for office, in my opinion. She refused to prosecute killer cops. She refused, she refused to prosecute, um, a killer in West Hollywood, killing young gay black men.
Right.
At their most vulnerable stage in life. This man, Ed Buck, was preying on young gay black men, bringing them into his, you know, drugged in, injecting them, shooting them up with crystal meth and killing them. And Jackie Lacy refused to prosecute. And that is where I met Chew Pasta. And advocating for Ed Buck to be arrested and evicted and convicted.
Yes.
For his crimes.
I was gonna ask you, who were some of your favorite politicians or, or maybe, you know, a, a choice for district attorney down the road to really combat all this stuff? Like who are some of, you're obviously involved with law, you're going to school to be a lawyer. Who are some of the politicians that you look up to and that you could rely on if you get elected to make that change?
Well, um, there's some great, well, there's two great candidates running, um, against the current district attorney. I've seen George Gascon's, um, work firsthand, um, and how he stood against, freak is not coming to mind, um, how he stood against, you know, um, execution.
Yeah.
Um, and that's where I learned about George Gascon. And he worked with Assemblywoman Weber on AB 3, uh, 392, when it, when she first, you know, brought it forward. So currently, I think George Gascon is the best candidate for district attorney and can actually beat district attorney Jackie Lacy. Electability is what I'm looking at in his race.
So you're being strategic about that?
Yes. Rachel, on the other hand, she's great.
Yeah.
It would be great to have a public defender, you know, elected to the district attorney's office. And another woman, you know, I'm tired of old white men, to be honest.
I'm not that old, David.
And I just, I don't think that she can beat Jackie Lacy. And we need a district attorney who's, who, you know, who's going to do the right thing. And, um, both of them, I believe, will do the right thing. It's just about beating out the incumbent with me.
I mean, that's a very pragmatic way of looking at it. I mean, I totally, I can see that. What do you say to someone in your district who is kind of turned off by politics, who doesn't really see it getting better? What do you say to them? You know, what are you gonna do different? Because it just seems like such an insurmountable, um, set of problems.
Well, unfortunately, that's a large part of my district who thinks that way. And, you know, what I've been telling people is that your vote matters, your voice counts. You know, I'm some, I'm not a normal politician. I'm not your typical politician. I'm not a career politician and I'm not in it for the money. I'm in it to clean up LA, um, bring restorative justice and community development and, you know, restore trust in the city of LA. I'm not in it for the money. I'm in it to help you, the people.
What about if you knock on somebody's door and you get somebody who necessarily, um, is not aligned with us progressively and says, well, I don't believe in raising the minimum wage to $15 an hour. How do you persuade that person to say, hey, still come out and vote for me, I'm still your candidate? How would you do that?
Well, um, I would sit down and I would, you know, question them like, you know, why don't you agree with where I'm raising the wage to $15? You know, what are your concerns with, you know, raising the wage? And, you know, what is your concern with, you know, a statewide and citywide rent control? Um, and, you know, try to get an understanding of that person's point of view. And then I will work with that person, um, to try to help him see other, him or her, to see other, or, you know, they, to see other people's point of view as well. And, you know, this mother who's out there working for $10 an hour, you know, $12 an hour at McDonald's to take care of her two kids.
Yeah.
That $12 an hour realistically isn't enough to, you know, provide the basic needs of life in LA.
Yeah, even 15. I mean, let's be honest. In Los Angeles, maybe somewhere else, but in Los Angeles is like, geez, you know, it's kind of close. What do you say to people that say that you are a loose cannon? That you're not a, a candidate that is political enough for the Democratic Party of California?
Well, um, to be honest, I really, I'm not a party person. I align with the Democratic Party, but I have my own beliefs.
Yeah.
And I have my own goals.
Yeah.
And as you've probably seen in the past, I've called out, you know, Democratic leaders and the California Democratic Party for their corrupt ways. And LACDP, you know, because, you know, they're just corrupt.
Yeah. Uh, no, no, I mean, well, it's the, that was part of the question. It's, it's all right. We don't have to show that and stuff. But, all right. So you, you say you're your own person, right?
Yes.
Oh, well, we can show a video if you want. Yeah, let's show the video.
Well, the reason why we were gonna ask that question is the first night we met, uh, we met when you, you were supporting Kim, uh, not Kim Iversen.
Kimberly.
Kimberly Ellis, somebody else, I like them both, but Kimberly Ellis is one of my favorite candidates. And that night we saw you, you demanded to have the microphone and you demanded to speak. You also got thrown out for fighting with Ed Buck's lawyer. I'll never forget that. You got to stay in the room and you had to leave. But like, you know, the question that, you know, the, the reason why we wanted to show you that is because people are going to say, look, look at these moments when Fiorella just talked about the loose cannon. How can we trust David Cunningham to represent, represent us? This is a little video, you could take a look at it, of you demanding the microphone at that. And we should let our, our people at home see it. Demanding the microphone to speak on what you thought was wrong.
Right.
Somebody eventually yielded the time and got you to speak. But for moments like that, that you know that people are gonna use this against you, if anybody's supporting the establishment, what do you do to combat, combat these moments?
Well, that's me calling out the Democratic Parties or LACDP's corrupt behavior. And if you support, you know, corruption, you support the downfall of LA, the city of LA, or the continuous downfall of the city of Los Angeles. We need people who are gonna call out the corruption.
Yeah.
In City Hall. We need people who are gonna call out corrupt leaders. I stand by my decision in that video and I stand by my decision with addressing Seymour Amster.
Yes, that we gotta get his name out there. Thank you so much and stuff. And you know, I, you know, me and Fiorella, we, we know that. We like, no, he's calling out corruption. We're there, you know, everybody might not see that that way. That's why I wanted to bring this to you and say, and get your opinion, let you tell the people what you thought about it.
Well, that's a good answer because I mean, for too long, people have been so focused on party loyalty and party appearance over the people. Like serving the people. They are public servants, LA City Council, the LACDP, they're there for the public, but it seems like it's turned into a contest of who is, who is more, a better politico and who looks good in what they do. So it is refreshing to see young candidates come out and challenge the status quo. And I think, you know, I think we need more of that. I think this is why we're in this situation. But going off of that, you were talking about provisional ballots. We've seen the corruption countywide, uh, in LA. But we've also seen the corruption statewide in California.
Right.
What do we do? Um, how do you feel about the upcoming elections with, with still Secretary of State Alex Padilla? With still, with a new voting system here in LA, a new machinery? How confident are you that everything is gonna go smooth this time around?
I, I don't really know. Um, I can't really say. We can only hope for the best.
Yeah.
And expect the worst.
Right.
With our current elected officials. And that is why we need new elected officials who will stand by the people and who will represent the people.
Yeah.
And not themselves. Because that's what the current elected officials are doing in the city of Los Angeles and in the state of California. They're representing themselves in their pockets.
Yeah. Where do you get your money from for your campaign?
My money?
Yeah. How do you raise money? Is anybody?
Individual donors.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Um, I was hit up by BP Oil, um, not too long ago.
You were.
And I said, no, I turned them down. And they continuously hit me up. And I'm like, no, I don't want your money.
Gotcha.
I'm good.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
When it comes to the money, let's talk about the city council, right? Okay.
Right.
You are gonna be allotted a lot of money to spend it in X, Y, and Z.
Right.
Infrastructure wise, maintenance area wise, in your community, what's the area you want to concentrate putting that money to the most?
So with putting money towards, like, you said, okay, can you rephrase your question?
Well, you know what? You, you have all this money. As a city council member, you have to decide what's good built, where they, where they're gonna allot money for, what projects? You know, whether it be cleaning up an area, fixing an area, something that's needed desperately. Where financially wise, would you use the money, allot the city money to go to where in your district? What area needs the most love and help?
Right. Um, so I think all of LA, um, needs the most, um, love and help. In my district, um, South Central, um, cleaning up the streets, um, getting home, the homeless housed, spending money on, um, um, the development of affordable housing. And shelters. More shelters are needed.
Yeah.
That's my priority, you know, as a city council member.
Yeah. So on that note, what is your opinion on the charter schools? Because there's always a lot of controversy, especially in a state like California, where, you know, some charter schools, uh, claim that they have helped individuals of a specific group, whether they have a disability, whether they're a foreign. Um, and then there's the LA Teachers Union that says, you know, uh, charter schools siphon money off of public schools. What is your opinion on that? Because most politicians are very...
I'm still learning a lot about the situation. Um, I don't know the answer. It's gonna take a lot of, you know, research and, um, you know, figuring out what the situation at hand is.
Yeah.
I can't say right now because I don't know.
Yeah.
Um, but I do support public schools and, you know, free, um, public K through 12 educations.
Yeah. So I mean, being a person who graduated at 15 years old and whatnot, you know, what do you think, what's the biggest area in California education as far as the public schools that we need to fix? Is it teacher salaries? Is it?
Oh, it's a lot. Educational equity.
What does that mean?
That means, um, so I worked for an organization as an organizer for Angelino's Organizing for Education. Schools in low income communities are forgotten about and they're given hand-me-downs, um, you know, from other schools. Teachers aren't paid well and, um, the art programs are taken out of our school, you know, music, um, theater, you know, and our kids have nothing, nothing to do. So they get bored and they go out and they, you know, make their own fun. And, you know, whether that's committing crimes or tagging and, you know, so forth and so on. I think that we need to bring back the arts into our schools.
Yeah, yeah. That's really important. So who are you supporting for president at this point in time? And what do you, what is your opinion on the election thus far? Because that is obviously, this is big, you know, not only are we running local candidates and congressional candidates.
Right.
But we're also running, uh, for president of the United States in a very tumultuous time.
So, um, in 2016, I was a Bernie delegate. I am on a fence right now with who I will be supporting. Tom Steyer looks great to me. Um, I've worked with him before he's decided to launch a campaign for president. I've seen his work firsthand, but unfortunately, he's another billionaire.
Yeah. He's also another old white man.
Another old white man. But we can also say that about several other candidates, you know, Bernie included.
Yeah, yeah.
But Bernie has a great plan, you know, I love and I respect Bernie. But at this time, I don't have a candidate who I will, you know, fully support or back. I, you know, stated Tom Steyer and I stated Bernie Sanders, but at this, I'm confused.
Me personally, Tom Steyer is my number three. He replaced Andrew Yang. And that's leaving Marion Williamson out of the equation, but, but no, I mean, I think Tom Steyer has a lot of great things about him too. I didn't like him at first myself. I didn't want to hear about another billionaire. What kind of work did you do with Tom Steyer?
Well, Tom, um, has dedicated a lot of his work, um, to foster youth. And, you know, seeing how he's interacted with, you know, the foster, or, you know, foster youth community over the years, before, you know, jumping into politics. We were really grateful for him and his work and his donations and, you know, his service to, you know, kids in foster care. So.
He seems like a, like he's kind of a class traitor in that way, that he's realized, you know, the work he's needed to do. I'm honestly, he's been doing pretty well as far as like answering the right questions right and being on the right side of progressives. You know, nationally though, like what do you look for in a candidate? Like what's gonna be the deciding factor?
Electability.
Electability, okay.
Electability. But I can catch a lie. And I think Joe Biden is a liar.
Yeah.
I do not support, that's him and several other candidates I do not support. And they're just pandering to the communities.
Who else is pandering other than Joe? Give us some juicy names.
Bloomberg?
Yeah.
Oh, God. No comment.
Exactly. So, um, my top two right now are Bernie Sanders and Tom Steyer.
Okay, cool.
Good, awesome. Um, and is there, um, anything that you'd like to particularly tell people to why they should vote for you? What, something that is going to separate you from other people running?
Right. So I'm running for Los Angeles City Council to restore justice, rebuild community and renew trust in the city of Los Angeles. I'm running to take out corruption in City Hall and throughout the city of Angeles and County of Los Angeles. Vote for me and I will represent you, unlike many others who have claimed that they, they will. So.
Where can they find you and give you a few bucks at?
So you can, um, go to davidcunningham.org. Um, that's currently not the, you know, I don't know how to say it, but that's currently not my, um, address. Because I don't know how to fix that. My team is working on it now. But davidcunningham.org should be up by the end of this week. And you visit my website, learn more, um, check out my platform for Los Angeles and, um, donate, you know, volunteer.
And you're on Facebook?
I'm on Facebook.
Twitter, you got it all.
Facebook, Twitter, facebook.com/davidforla, number four, LA. Twitter, um, dot com slash, forward slash, um, david underscore C U N N. And Instagram, um, david underscore cunningham underscore.
When is the primary?
So the primary, um, is next year for City Council.
Yes.
It's March of 2021. And a general election will be in, um, November of 2021.
Okay.
So we got some time there.
We got some time.
David, thank you for joining the convo couch today.
Thank you for having me.
We appreciate you. Thank you very much.
For Pasta Jardula.
And Fiorella Isabel and we'll be back.
Yeah, we will be back in a little bit. Johnny Sue, we're gonna finish out with a little video. Take a look.
Combo out.
Oh.
We'll wait a couple minutes and then we will be, we will put it right out. But thank you guys for watching. We are gonna be interviewing more candidates this month. Congressional candidates. We're gonna be, uh, talking to more local candidates and getting their opinions on what's going on here in other states and nationally. So, uh, we are also doing the GoFundMe. If you guys can please help us out, $1 is fine. You know, we're like, we're like Bernie. Our donations are small, uh, and that's how we like it. So anything you can give would be awesome. All right.
Here's the video. We're gonna check it out.
Hello fam, welcome back to the convo couch. As you know, we are in the middle of a huge primary and election season that will determine so much of where the future of America goes.
We want you to know that we appreciate and are so grateful for the support you all give us every single week. That said, we want to bring you even more information, breaking news and speak more truth during this long primary season. So we've decided to try and take on a new venture.
We want to cover key primaries in as many states as possible. But in order to do this, travel, take off days of work, go to events and buy new equipment to get us top notch work, we've decided to start a GoFundMe.
Our goal is to raise at least 10K for the first half of the primary season through March. Afterwards, we will evaluate what needs to be done for the last half of the primary and possibly into the election. This will include airfare, travel, equipment, accommodations and other traveling expenses.
We live in Los Angeles and the rent is too damn high. But we want to be able to cover as much as possible. Anything happens during the voting time, we will be there to break the news and bring you live updates. We don't just sit on the couch, we follow the action.
And as we've said, this election is so important, if not the most important election of our time. And we can't afford to miss it or not be there in case any shenanigans go down.
So fans, we humbly ask for your help and any way of support you can give it. Donate, help us cover these events and talk to the people and politicians. You already know that we ask the right questions. For those who donate, we'll put your name down in the credits and show a big thank you to you. We'll post the link down below.
Thanks again for your support. It truly means the world to us.
And it is always appreciated on the couch. And please, like, share and subscribe for Pasta
And Fee.
and Johnny Sue on those ones and twos.
Convo out.
Help us out.